So anybody that wants to participate, the invocation today will be offered by Pastor Alan Ikman from Strong Tower Church. And then the pledge by Supervisor Goodman.
Well, good morning, everybody. What a privilege to be here. So if we just bow our hearts before the Lord. Father, thank you so much for this beautiful nation that we have. And I thank you so much, Father, for this board of supervisors that are here, Lord, to talk about things, to decide about some things that needed, Lord. Lord, you are the one who created the heavens and the earth. You said in your word that man can only plan, but it is you who directs the plan. Lord, as they do this meeting, I just pray, I just pray for godly discernment. I just pray for a clear direction, for the decision for everything that they're gonna do. Lord, you are a mighty God, and you know what you're doing. You know what is best for us and for the welfare of your citizen here in the United States. So God, be with us, be with them from start to finish, that your name will be made great and glorified in everything that we do. And in Jesus' name I pray, amen. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up, we'll have a call to the public. And I have four folks that want to speak. If anybody else wants to speak afterwards, just approach the mic. I have Barry McCain.
Good morning, Chairman Sertie, Board of Supervisors and friends and staff. My name is Barry McCain from the city of Maricopa. Monday, SRP, APS, and Tucson Electric Power all reported about future energy sustainability. The summer, they said that we will have enough, so we should be fine as far as having power. So what happened, and Eloy shouldn't happen. Because of the water drought, the companies will not have as much megawattage as hoped, but because extra snowfall, both Glen Canyon Dam and Lake Powell, water storage is more positive. And this summer, we should, again, be fine, but the next reporting date will be 2023. But they're saying that we should be good for next five years. So again, we shouldn't have what happened in Eloy. Solar panels have been delayed because they're getting through the U.S. Customs, but yet we still have natural gas and wind to hedge the future power supply because power verde plant will be putting nuclear energy. Vegetation management should curb future forest fires, but the three companies reported that they need better storage batteries and other storage solutions. I'd like to thank, I would like to thank Dan Dooley for being yesterday at the Capitol when he talked about HB 2509, the Taco Bill. That was interesting. One thing I would like to say that, I'd like to say how important that entrepreneurship and the small business keeps our economy going. It's something that I'll let due process take care of it. Thank you.
So we always do the pledge and the prayer before the meeting, and I neglected to call the meeting into order. So I'm doing that retroactively. So we're now in order. So.
We were out of order.
Yeah. Tyler Hudgens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to be here with you guys at the Penile County Board of Supervisors. My name is Tyler Hudgens again. I'm a resident of Santan Valley. Yeah, I'm a little bit taller. Thank you. So I'm here representing STV, Inc., 2024. It's our desire to see that Santan Valley become an incorporated municipality with Penile County. And so we sent, as you guys know, a notice of intent of incorporation on April 12, 2023. We believe that Santan Valley meets the statutory requirements for incorporation, and we're very grateful for what Penile County has done and has managed our area. And so we really appreciate the efforts. We desire to continue to work forward with Penile County, but we desire to also see local control over state shared revenue funds and address issues like water, transportation, and development. And this is an exploratory process, and so there's a process going forward. We want to be really open to the public. Nothing has been decided, and we are intending to utilize the period going forward to obtain feedback and direction from registered Penile County voters within the potential map areas. And so we're going to be going through a series of neighborhood meetings, including HOAs, developing a draft map. We have a preliminary map that is not finalized, that we are going to use as context to have conversations as we go about the community. We're also going to work on creating a potential budget and services for a future municipality, connect with neighboring cities. We're already arranging meetings with cities like Queen Creek, Florence, Mesa, Apache Junction. And so we're going to be connecting with them and working with them on this issue, and then organizing community education forums, meet with large tract landowners, and recruit residents to join and support our efforts. So thank you for the time and just being able to come here and to publicly state this. We look forward to working with you guys. More information will be available starting May 1st on the website, www.santanvalleyinc.com, and our email address will be info@stvinc2024. Thank you again.
And if we could get your name and approximate address, it helps.
I'm Betty Kay, Betty Kay, from Gold Canyon. And greetings to the board and to the public. And I'm here to say thank you to the board and to Attorney, County Attorney Kent Volkmer, for several programs and events in Penile County that I've recently taken advantage of. Also, thanks to the other employees who establish and maintain these services. First, County Attorney Volkmer recommended to my two friends, Dia and Susan, that we meet with Denise Smith, Director of Juvenile Justice, Juvenile Court Services. We were impressed with her and her commitment to help youth in trouble and their families be successful, successful, productive members of our community. This means that young people do not immediately go to detention, but are evaluated to determine whether several different diversionary programs would help them. It also means that fewer young people are in detention, which in the long run is less costly to the county than the diversionary programs. She and her staff were totally, are totally committed to the youth and their best interest. I was very impressed with her and her attitude towards her job. Second, four of us from Peralta Trails went five miles up the road to the new Peralta Regional Park, Penile County Regional Park. While it is still a work in progress, we enjoyed the views, the campsite, and the trails. I made a list of improvements that might be in order when there is more time. I doubt that we will camp there since we only live five miles down the road, but we were happy to be there and we could send out-of-town guests there. And there's also a talk within our neighbors of going up there for a picnic or for happy hour. So this has been a good addition to Penile County. Third thing is, Dia and I went to the community forum in Florence last Monday. I learned that Penile County should have enough water for the next 50 years and that you are working on solutions to go beyond that. I also learned that the Adult Justice Department is working on diversionary programs and on help for people newly released from prison so that they aren't stuck in Florence with no money, no job, and no way to leave. I think both of these issues are very important. So anyway, thank you to the board and to the attorney, and thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair, Board. Kent Volkmer, Penile County Attorney. I live in Casa Grande. I am addressing you at Call to Public because I just frankly forgot to put an agenda item on, and there's two things that I wanted to address. One, you'll notice that I'm wearing jeans. Today is National Denim Day. It is in recognition of our support of sex assault survivors. So what you'll notice is a lot of people around the county, a lot of offices, a lot of organizations are wearing jeans today. Again, it is just showing that we support, we hear them, we love our survivors, and we're here to support them. The second thing that's probably, I'm embarrassed that I forgot to mention, is today is National Administrative Assistant Day. I know I speak on behalf of my office, the board, the entire county, when I say, "We couldn't function without our administrative assistants." I just want to take a minute and thank them for what they do. You know, we have 2,000 people that work for this government, and if it wasn't for the administrative assistants doing everything, we'd all be in trouble. I can tell you, I'd be a disaster. I would have no idea where to go. I wouldn't know what I'm doing. They are the glue that holds this community together. They're, and it's not just in the government, it's our entire county, it's our entire state. And I just want to take a moment to publicly recognize them and thank them for their service. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? So we will move on to presentation and discussion on Penile County projects and concerns by the Bureau of Land Management and Leon Thomas, and you have a whole team here, so.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Leon Thomas. I'm the district manager for the Phoenix District Bureau of Land Management. It's been a while since I've been here, since before, you know, the pandemic. And so before I start, I just want to say that, you know, it's a part of our protocol in my district for us to get around, make sure we get to all of our counties, make sure that we get to all of our city councils. And so we are back out on our roadshow and doing this. And so I brought my team, as Supervisor Sertie said, I brought Tyler Lindsay, who is the field manager for the Lower Snoren Field Office, which makes up half of our, the bottom half of our district, the southern part of our district, which includes your county. His assistant field manager, Sarita Bonali, is here as well. She's brand new on the job. She's been with our district for a very long time, so very experienced. I also have our associate district manager, my second-in-charge, Angie Meese. And I brought our public affairs person, his name is Chris Wonderly, as well. So what you'll know about me is I try my best to travel in a pack so that I have the answer in the room all the time, even if I don't have the answer. As Supervisor Sertie said, I am going to try to walk through some projects that we have that we feel are important to your county in this area. And so if we can move to the next slide, please. We are right now analyzing through an environmental assessment the Goldfield Recreation Area. And just to give some backstory on this, almost three years ago, it'll be three years in October, I was called into a meeting where we had some concerns from the residents about, you know, the unsheltered population that was living in and around this area. Their concerns were, you know, of course, safety in the area, some of the trash that's being, that was and still is being left behind in that area. And also, they were concerned that, you know, some of the catastrophic fires that we saw out in the East Valley were the cause of some of the people that were living out here, and they felt that there was a potential in this area for that. So we basically came up with a three-tier kind of plan as to how we're going to attack this. And this is tier number one, which is actually taking the longest, and this is actually trying to do some planning in this area. The second tier was doing some fuels mitigation work to clear up some of the fire fuels that could be out there. And then the third tier was actively working with support services-type members in the community who could help provide some wraparound services for the unsheltered population that was living in and around that area. And I can touch on that a little bit as well. Starting with the Goldfield Recreation Area Plan that we're looking at, let's, you all are familiar with the area, over by the Goldfield, I mean, Lost Dutchman State Park there. If you take a look at the red boundary that we have around the outer part of the area, that's the secret sauce in our planning. And all of our alternatives that we're analyzing, except for the no-action alternative, we have this recreation area boundary. The reason why I'm calling it the secret sauce is because this boundary gives our law enforcement tools that they don't have currently. Part of the issue with the unsheltered population living out there and some of the others is that they are overstaying the 14-day camping rule. And without that rec area boundary, it is very difficult for us to be able to actually get any type of prosecution through the district attorney and through the court unless we take some steps such as make sure we provide them with opportunities for wraparound services, and it goes on and on. And so this rec area boundary allows us to move a lot swifter in our law enforcement ranks, to be able to use our recreation regs to immediately remove people from the area if it's not called for camping in that area. And I'll get to that in just a second. We can move to the next slide, please. In our range of alternatives for this area, not only do we have the secret sauce as far as the recreation area boundary, but we're looking at, you know, sectioning off, or at least analyzing, sectioning off different areas up there for different type of recreational activities. So as you can see in the northern part there, we have an option for analyzing equestrian. Down in the southern part, southwest part there, we have OHV and archery. And then we also have some camping being analyzed along the area where we're seeing a lot of it now, but actually putting in some facilities potentially, where we'll though actually have to be reservation-style camping if we decide to select that as an alternative to where, you know, you go through rec.gov, you reserve a spot, when your time for camping is done, you have to leave, just like people do it all over the country. And we're analyzing equestrian to the east, southeast side as well. And there was some talk about, you know, you know, moving the staging area on the other side of the road and things of that nature in our comments that we've received. So we're analyzing all of that as well. Bottom line is, we're creating a rec area boundary, and we're analyzing various recreational activities to be had in this recreational area. So in the range of alternatives, Tyler has the option to select some or all, right? As long as it's been analyzed. And so we have the option to say, hey, it's going to be all equestrian, nothing else. Or we have the option to say, you know, there'll be no camping, but we'll have all, everything else up there, and they can just, you know, camp somewhere else. Or we can say, no OHV area, all equestrian, and we can just make sure there's routes up into the Bulldog area for them to do the OHV riding. So analyzing all of these alternatives allows for us to select the alternatives that best fit what we want to see out here. When I say "we," I'm meaning members of the public as well. Next slide, please. So that's where we're at. We're analyzing the alternatives as far as the comments that have come in through our public comment period. We're actually a little further where the arrows pointing to. We are actually drafting the plan, and we hope to have a draft plan out for public comment by the end of June. And we would like to have the environmental assessment decisions signed by August. That's our goal in the plan. Before I move on, any questions from the board? Chair? Okay. Next slide, please. Tier two of that plan was, like I said, actually doing some fuels treatments out there, which we've completed. And so the yellow areas where you see the fuel treatments that were had in and around the private areas, and then Lost Dutchman State Park actually has some fuels treatments around it as well. So that private area has 150-foot buffer now. And if you go to the next slide, please, you'll see that, and you've probably seen in the community, we've been out burning the slash from the fuel treatments to ensure that, you know, that biohazard's not just laying out there. Next slide. Another project we've been working on is conveying the Apache Junction rodeo ground completely over to Apache Junction. And sitting on Tyler's desk right now is that request for payment conveyance memo for the 1.4 million. He's going to get that signed and have that sent out by the latest Monday. Once we receive those funds, it will go into suspense, and then we will start the process to go ahead and get that patent over to Apache Junction for that.
That's great. And I want to just point out, too, that what a great partner the BLM is, the whole complex, the whole government complex of the county and the city are on BLM land that was made available to build that. And Prospect, or Peralta Park is in agreement with you guys, which you're probably going to talk about also, also the Silly Mountain. So I hopefully I'm not jumping ahead of your, of your presentation. And then the rodeo grounds, Prospector Park, that's great. And unfortunately, Santan Valley doesn't have any BLM land, or you could, would probably make land available there for a government complex as well. So, okay, hopefully that didn't take any of your fuel away. And also, the fuels thing, that got emulated by the state and other people around the state. So you guys were the first to do that, and that's great with, with all the brush that we have out there. So I won't interrupt you again.
You're the chairman. This is your show. So you're exactly right. As far as the fuels treatment, we actually had a partnership with the state in doing it, and it actually serves as a model for how we want to do other fuels treatments around the state. And so it was fantastic that we had that. And then I wasn't going to talk about Peralta Park today, but I do want to say this. We are working on a recreation project in the northern part of my district, off of Table Mesa Road along I-17. I'm taking my staff out on a field trip to Peralta Park because what you all have done out there is nothing short of amazing. It's beautiful. And I want to show my staff the possibilities if we all just kind of put our heads together and all work together and try to actually have something positive, you know, transform on the landscape. And so we're going to go out to Peralta Park, we're going to kick the dirt a little bit with our staff, and I'm going to say, "It needs to look like this up north as well." So I appreciate how good of a job you all did there. Next slide, please. This is a project that's been a long time coming as well. Box Canyon was actually a very popular recreational target shooting site, already being used. And there were some discussions about, you know, the county managing it and going back and forth because although we have some responsible users out there, there were still the after effects and, of some of the trigger trash, and it just didn't look, you know, the way we want our recreational areas to look across the Bureau of Land Management. And so we decided to have an endeavor on our district to not only, you know, enhance this site and actually manage for recreational target shooting at this site, but we actually have three more, actually four more that, that we've built out. And so, or in the process that we're waiting for funding on one. And so Box Canyon, recreational area and shooting site is an example of this, we're pretty close to being done. When I say pretty close, 99%. We had some weather events that collapsed a bunch of our berm's when we had the, some of the storms, and we went back to the contractor and asked them if it was covered under the warranty as far as them coming back in and replacing those berm's, and they said it was an act of God, and so the warranty doesn't cover it. And so we had to use our own staff to go in and repack and rebuild those berm's, and that's why it took a while. And so that was a major delay. So we're pretty close to opening here. These sites, when I say these, the other recreational shooting sites as well, has the same secret sauce that I was talking about, where we put the rec area boundary around it, right? So now we can say, you can't shoot here in the rec area, but you can shoot here, have fun, and we can actually enforce that. And so you're going to see that pop up across the district when it comes to these recreational shooting sites. It's going to be a beautiful facility to use. When we went out there a couple of weeks ago, we actually talked about the possibility of putting in some other amenities, like places where people can actually have a Ramada and have lunch and things of that nature out there, and even the potential of some campsites later on down the road, if we want to do that. When I say we're 99% ready to go, I mean that, we're pretty close. The quandary now is that we're bumping up against fire season, right? And so do we open them for a month and then snatch it back and say we're closed for fire season? And so I don't think we're going to do that. We may let it roll through the fire season and then open up and be 100% ready to go after fire season so we don't have any incidents out there tied to target shooting and fire.
Supervisor Miller, is this in your district?
No.
Cool.
All right. Did I miss anything, team? All right. That's all I have. Any questions from the board?
Anybody? So we look forward to the, how many acres, do you have any, an idea of how many acres are in Penile County? I mean, we're primarily state land, but BLM has a large chunk as well.
I don't know the total acreage in Penile County of BLM land you're talking, right?
Yes.
I can get that answer for you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. And if anybody looks on any of the maps that are color-coded, it's, if you see yellow, then that is the BLM. That's the color that they got.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be to open it for a month and then shut it down for fire season. A lot of people have been asking when it's going to open, and give them a taste of it and maybe satisfy some desires to go out there for a while, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be great to open up, even for a month or six weeks, whatever.
You don't feel there'll be backlash as far as when we close it for fire season, and I'm feeling like, you know, the tasty food was snatched off of their plate?
I think they're all adults.
Okay.
So when the fire restrictions happen, I know the National Forest is usually first, and they're, so do you basically follow suit with what they recommend, or how will you know when it's time to close?
We actually all align. We speak and we make sure that we put the fire restrictions on at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, based on the conditions and the predictors out there.
Okay.
Yeah. And so they won't go first or in Forest will actually probably do it at the same time, at least in my district, working with the Tano and everyone else, so.
All right. Well, thank you for that timeline of what's going on up at the ghost town. Also, I know a lot of people are frustrated that they want instant, some kind of instant action, and you are going through all of the correct procedures so that, so that it is done correctly, and I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for making the trip out. Discussion on Canada-Arizona Business Council. Glenn Williamson.
Chairman Sertie, Board, thank you very much for having me here today to give you a slight update on what we're doing at the Canada-Arizona Business Council, as much of this does relate to areas like yours. We are spending an inordinate amount of time working on water, at all aspects of water. We have projects that we call Hourglass, which are, we are working with WIFA, trying to come up with alternatives to IDE's proposal, which involve the Sea of Cortez. We are also working very, very closely with our other members, APS, SRP, Epcor, as you know I'm chairman of, we have a very large vested interest in this region, and as well as ASU. Yesterday, we kicked off the Arizona Water Innovation Initiative. You remember, the former governor gave ASU $40 million to study water. So John Kyle, Richard Morris, and a whole group of us were together with about 100 people, and we sat down and had very, very extensive discussions on this issue. You'll be happy to know, and it's very relevant to this region, is that we had the Farm Bureau there on the panel. So agriculture was represented, and that was something that is very concerning to us at the CABC, that both mining and agriculture are represented in all water discussions at all levels. We get into a constant dialogue of, wow, growth should usurp other parts of maybe the food process. us at the CABC, that both mining and agriculture are represented in all water discussions at all levels. We get into a constant dialogue of, wow, growth should usurp other parts of maybe the food process, and we are making sure that that is not the case. The other part of what we're spending a lot of time, as you know, Canada has enormous investments in this region, and we are very, very concerned that while consumer sentiment is still very positive, the amount of corporate interest in our water scenario is becoming problematic in certain parts of the world. You heard people here today speak, and I agree with them. Our short-term water is not an issue. Our medium-term water is being very addressed, very, very heavily. Our long-term water, 25 years and out, still has some work to do. We need more definition on that. One of the problems that we are bumping into is we are under such a large spotlight for foreign direct investment via the semiconductor industry. We are now having to deal with questions on water that we weren't quite prepared to deal with, and we at the Canada-Arizona Business Council are working closely with the governor's office and everybody else in this, trying to make sure that what reality of short-term water is fine and medium-term water is fine, that the media on other parts of the U.S. and globe both get that sentiment gotten to them very, very quickly, that we are doing just fine. That has an awful lot to do with people like Intel, where we have a $12 billion Canadian investment in their new semiconductor plant, brand-new products that are going up, new firms that are going up. Each of them has come back, and they are concerned about the image of water in the desert. And we have a neighbor to the east called Texas that is doing a spectacular job of counter-selling the state of Arizona. And we actually have, I spent a lot of time down in Sonora recently, and to, much to my interest, international community is spending a lot of time in Sonora right now. Water is a big thing, and it's not just the Israelis, it's the Germans, it's the French, it's the Japanese. And American companies and Canadian companies are not spending enough time in that region. So it's something that we're paying very, very close attention to because we want to make sure that the Sonora and the Arizona side of the mega-region are looked after simultaneously. So that's part of our project, North America, where we're looking at the change from horizontal global market to a vertical market, where we're looking at Canada, Arizona, and Mexico. The third project that we're working on that's very deep that affects you is Project Lift. We are now at 220 nonstop direct flights a week to Canada. We've opened up a series of new markets into Tucson, and we are now trying to get larger aircraft. And we are in discussions with four airports here and 10 airports in Canada. And that lift not only affects the personal travelers and the business travelers, of which the million Canadians that come down here, 25% of those are business, but we're also very interested in cargo, and we are in deep discussions with the produce associations on movement of cargo, specifically grapes, via planes to Canada, as 70% of all of Canada's fresh foods and vegetables come from this region in the wintertime. So that's a big one for us. Our Foreign Direct Investment Initiative is our last one on the agenda. That is what we have been spending a lot of time. As you know, Canada is the largest foreign direct investor in the state of Arizona by a very large magnitude, and we are now working with the legislature, and we have targeted opening a state trade office in the city of Toronto, which is the financial capital of Canada. So that is something that you should make sure you are aware of. This is coming out of Dave Cook's office, who is now heading up the international side for the state, which is spectacular. The House is moving very forward, very fast on that. The Senate is not quite up to speed on it, and Sandra Watson still handles the governor's office handling all of the international. This is a very cohesive project that we are all working on, and it's really kind of a treat to watch the internationalization of Arizona occur at a governmental level. I believe that at the county levels, it's very important. I can tell you that Santa Cruz just got involved with us, and Nogales is very involved, Yuma is very, very involved. And again, this gets back to the agrarian component, that we have a strong, strong interest in making sure that that is represented. So Chairman Sertie, that is my report for today.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Chair, Mr. Williamson, just a quick question.
Certainly.
You mentioned, you know, long-term, midterm, short-term, and long-term is 25-year water. What's your definition of midterm?
So we're looking at right now, we divided it up. We have about 1,000 people and companies working on everything from grass to tennis courts, you name that. The midterm is within the next five to eight years, and so that would affect issues like Harkwahela Valley, where Levine, Cohen, and Wolfswinkle have water rights there. It would affect the most recent announcement you heard with Fotomonte getting moved out of, they'd be given a year's notice to move out of Butler Valley, and the aquifers that are underneath Butler Valley are massive, and the CAP runs right beside that. So these are, these are the aquifers and the groundwater reservoirs that we have of scale and size. And as we move forward, the federal government, it'll be a fascinating thing to watch. If we collectively, within the state, or states, plural, upper and lower basins can't get our acts together, the federal government will step in, and they will enact a series of clauses that they have, which will bypass all legal issues that we have between our states. That one gets our attention. That, along with a 50% reduction in CAP water, this kind of thing, it's, at the end of the day, we're okay. We just have to be paying very close attention to how it all moves around, short, medium, and long term.
Okay, thank you. And then one other quick question.
Certainly.
Why interest in grapes? There's other stuff we grow.
There is, but it's one of those ones that is the highest, one very, very high profit margin, and the dollars and the size of it is something that got the attention of the airlines, and the movement of produce is transitioning in many, many ways in how it's being moved. And the airlines are now trying to increase their cargo capacity. So we have talked to the airlines to get larger aircraft to come into the region. It's not about just moving the people, it's the cargo. So we have been trying, and we've given them lists of agricultural content, and grapes seems to have been the one that has bubbled to the surface.
I just thought it was like for boutique wineries, you know?
No, it's actually table grapes.
Great.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? I know that you and Supervisor Miller are a wealth of knowledge on water, and we're just coming off of the wettest winter in 20 or 30 years. And I just recently drove up to Apache Lake, Roosevelt's full, they're saying Lake Mead is even filling up more than they projected. If we would have five years in a row like this, could we all breathe a sigh of relief for 20 or 30 years?
No. It takes a lot more than that to undo the years of drought, as Mr. Miller will agree. I think, this is one of the reasons why, when we look at the 91-foot increase in SRP's dam that they're in the process of doing, we should have done that about 10 years ago, and we would have captured more of the runoff. But what you're looking at climate, from a climate point of view, we got very, very fortunate, and it will add time to the bottom line, but I would not, I would not use it as a, "Let's put it on the back burner, and we're good for two or three or four years." I would be, I think we've been given a huge opportunity to pay attention to water right now. We do it with transportation, we do it with power, we do it with telecommunications, we do it with ports. We need to now move our 1940s water infrastructure in the state of Arizona, fast-forward to where we need to go. And this is one of the reasons why we created Hourglass, is that we're watching around the globe, tens and hundreds of billions of dollars being put into infrastructure, and we just need to figure out what it is we want to do at the large scale so that when we get to that point 25 years down the road. And the reason we say 25 years down the road, Chairman, is that when the governor released the 100-year water supply, it was around 25 years that they carried forward to the problem. So it actually was a, it showed us where the problem really will start to pop up.
Okay. Thanks again.
You're very, very welcome.
All right. Discussion approval, disapproval for, as of proclamation for Pinal County Town Hall Recognition Day. Donna McBride.
Donna McBride, I am a proud resident of Casa Grande and a 19-year employee with Pinal County Juvenile Court. I am also vice chair of the Pinal County Town Hall, and with me, we are blessed to have Sandy Smith, who has been our longtime chairman and has been involved in all 32 years of the Pinal County Town Hall. Just a couple of comments, and then I would like to indulge your permission to have Sandy actually read the proclamation. I thank Jeff McClure for helping us with this. You know, we are so thankful for Pinal County Town Hall to have been here 32 years. We are more thankful that the Board of Supervisors and Pinal County themselves have supported it. As you know, many of you have sat on the committee over the years. And one of the things that we really recognize is that we were able to bring the communities, the towns, the cities, people together, including students, over those 32 years. We have given away thousands of dollars in scholarships for young people who have now followed their dream to get into government and to other areas because of the support of the towns and cities and Pinal County. And so we, we are here today humbled because we know that now is the time for us to let others take the direction of what Pinal County Town Hall started 32 years ago. And so we appreciate the support that you have given us over the years, and we recognize that now is the time for, for us to move on and to let other groups come into play. I will say that we have had many successes over the years, and we have been able to bring in students over the years that have been very successful in following their dream of being in the very places that all of us have been. And I will tell you that the one that stands out in my mind is a young man from the city of Maricopa who came to our event. And over the course of two and a half days, we noticed that every day he came prepared to be involved and talk to, you know, people like you and I and learn about government. And every day that he came, he wore the same clothes. And he ended up winning the $1,000 college scholarship. But afterwards, what we did find out was this young man was homeless, living behind a grocery store and working part-time at that grocery store, and that he was the one that knew that because of people like you supporting students like him, that he had a future, and he did. And so those are the things that we leave behind and the memories that we're going to have of those people that have really made a difference, including you. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Sandy Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. In 32 years, if you think about that, that was, I was 49 years old, so if you want to add it all up, you'll know I'm 81. But, but I will say that Town Hall has given me much more than I ever expended into it. The subject matters, as Donna said, the youth, one of the youth, we kept talking about our future leaders. One of the youth got up and said, "I have to correct you, we are now your leaders now. We are your leaders now." And so it kind of humbles you when you realize they have that ambition and that willingness to learn. And we were honored to have them with us. I remember when we added the component of the students and what it meant to Pinal County Town Hall. So it's been my pleasure to serve with that. And I would like for the members of Pinal County Town Hall that are here today to come up here with me, please. It's through the commitment of folks like this that Town Hall could last 32 years. And the success of the Town Hall, when we started going over, whether we take a whole day to discuss a subject, and then we realized, all the Town Halls that you folks have, that our cities and towns have, that the different organizations have, that that banner has been taken up and is being filled really well. And we know that Pinal Partnership is going to be adding a youth component to it to a certain extent. Not exactly sure how that's going to look, but our commitment to our citizens and our, our government has been, over the years, just amazing. And the commitment that you folks have given us is just beyond thanks. We just have so much gratitude to you. So with that, I will read the...
We would have to approve it first.
Okay.
So we're going to ask for a question.
Boy, did I jump ahead in that one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, the list of your, of your meetings is impressive, 32 years. That's quite a Herculean effort. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any questions or further discussion? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve item number four as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. We can now read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and audience that is here. By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors' proclamation, Pinal County Town Hall Recognition Day, whereas the County of Pinal, Arizona recognizes the valuable contributions from the Pinal County Town Hall Committee to our local communities, and whereas we honor the dedication of the Pinal County Town Hall Committee for 32 years of faithful volunteer service, and whereas we recognize that Pinal County Town Hall was created in 1988 by a group of volunteer community leaders with the goal to engage, educate, and build consensus for delegates, and whereas the organization provided the foundation, training, and leadership skills to help prepare our youth to be the leaders of tomorrow, and whereas Pinal County Town Hall explored 32 different topics that promoted networking and collaboration among its participants, and whereas the Pinal County Town Hall Committee recognizes their service to Pinal County has now met its goal by assisting in the development of like-minded organizations such as Pinal Partnership, youth commissions, councils, and individual community coalitions. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, in appreciation of the Pinal County Town Hall Committee members' dedication service, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2023, as Pinal County Town Hall Recognition Day proclaim this 26th day of April 2023, with Jeff Sertie, Chairman, District 5, Jeffrey McClure, Vice Chairman, District 4, Kevin Kavanaugh, District 1, Mike Goodman, District 2, Stephen Miller, District 3. And thank you so very much. Our appreciation goes out to you for this.
And we could get some pictures if you choose. We have a photographer standing by.
All right. Okay.
Supervisors in the back, everybody else in the front, right here. Just kind of line up for some imaginary line. Step on forward, pretend this is your line right here. All the way up here. All the way up here. There you go.
That's the X line.
Yes.
Oops.
Everybody, do me a favor. Why don't you come over on this side, because we're heading on that side.
Watch everybody's side.
Do me a favor, come up. Come up right there. There you go. There we go. And looking right here, three, two, and again, do another one. Sorry, three, two, one. Okay, this time I want to see some real big smiles. Three, two. There we go. Thank you very much.
Okay, during the annual National Association of Workforce Boards Forum held in DC, Pinal County Workforce Board was presented with an award. Joel Millman or James Smith, can you tell us about this?
I've already dropped it once. Joel Millman, Director of Arizona Work, Pinal County, and a employee of the Pinal County Economic Workforce Development Department. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This award, I just wanted to share with you, our Pinal County Workforce Development Board is a 19-member board, created and authorized under the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, and our board comprised of a majority of business representatives... And our board comprised of a majority of business representatives in Pinal County is charged with setting the strategic direction of our Arizona workforce system, along with convening and partnering and collaborating with community partners. The effort of the board is a joint effort with the Pinal County Board of Supervisors. And this award was presented to us at last, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, last month, a number of us traveled to Washington DC for the national forum, which is represented by over 500 workforce development boards in the country. This particular award had eight applications, of which we obviously were number one of those eight, and we're very proud of that. And so, we just wanted to take this opportunity to share this with you, because again, it's a joint award. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Leo, County Manager's Office, Chris, as well, and the County Attorney's Office, because they play a prominent role in assisting us and guiding us and supporting us in the efforts that we have. I also want to thank Natasha and Kelsey, who have been, I can't say how much they've been helpful in guiding us in creating our board and guiding us in being a board and being compliant. So it's very helpful. So this is an award that, I'll just read it real quick if I could. National Association of Workforce Boards, 2023 WIWA, which is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Trailblazer Award, Pinal County Workforce Development Board, for outstanding achievement and partnership to recognize the value of collaboration by working together to advance the future of workforce development. And at this time, if I could, I'd like to introduce Harold Christ, who is our Vice Chair of our board. And I'd be remiss if I did not recognize Shannon McHenry. Not only is she our department's exec assistant, but it's Admin Professionals Day, and I meant to stop against something, so I owe her a big something after this meeting. Laura Locano is our data analyst, and Mariah Robles is our compliance and monitoring specialist. And all three of them invaluable to this whole effort here, along with the 14 partners of service delivery that make up Arizona Work. So without that, Harold Christ.
Thank you. Chairman Sertie, board members, Mr. Liu, Mr. Keller, there's so much thing to be said about this type of award. There were 1,500 people collecting at the hotel in Washington when we went to this conference, representing 500 different workforce boards from around the country. So this was, I don't know that as I went, I did not really anticipate this magnitude of representation. And then for Pinal County and all the effort that's put forth by you all and the staff to be able to receive an award like this really was monumental. The response, the reaction that went on through the course of the three days of the conference was really interesting to watch. I think so many times, and most of you, as I have, have served on many, many boards through the years. Sometimes we sit on a board and we wonder, "Why am I here?" Because you're thinking, "Gosh, you know, this is really not relevant," and so forth to what's going on. This board is amazing, and the people that it touches, to be able to take the youth that need help in finding new jobs or opportunities for employment, to take the employers that are coming in, that you all have done such a great job in recruiting and bringing into the county, and to be able to match the people up, both in youth, middle age, who are needing to change jobs, maybe get some other types of education, and then people that may be a little bit older, who are going back into the workforce. And all those we get to touch and be a part of. And again, it's credit to you for supporting us as you have through the years. So thank you very much for doing that.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say that, you know, good, hard work deserves recognition. So you and your team, congratulations.
Thank you.
And would you like a picture for your department?
Of course. Yes, thanks.
Supervisor Miller, what's new down at the state Capitol besides the governor making tamales illegal?
Thank you for the report. Pretty much in neutral because of not much has happened with any of the legislation, or it's all kind of libel because of the two vacancies that are in there, and I don't know how they've progressed on that. And so, as far as CSA, it's given us an opportunity to kind of work on our budget for the organization of CSA. So not much to add to anything new with the legislation going through. Leo, you have something? Point it at me.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Miller might be a little bit humble about this, but the bill that, 2438, I know we didn't run it through CSA, but how significant that bill is that you and Tammy helped shepherd through?
Yes. Well, I can't keep track of all of them that we got through there. We have, Pinal County has been successful with a handful of things.
And that enables counties, which has not existed before, except in Pima County, to participate in recharge and related infrastructure. So we always get that question, especially if a big business is coming. As Glenn was mentioning earlier, where are we getting the water? And what is this doing to our water situation? And I think what a lot of people don't realize is, when those projects come, we are, we have to get water sources, and they're usually coming from other places. Now this gives us the ability to recharge that water locally, and that we can help to participate as a county in that effort. It can do things like get rid of CAGRIT fees for residents that are paying that on their property tax bills. But what it will do is it gives net new water to Pinal County and recharges it locally versus us paying a fee to have it recharged somewhere else. And so, it's really groundbreaking for us, and we're going to examine with our staff opportunities throughout the county. There's large, medium, small projects that could be done. You got that eastern Casa Grande and unincorporated area that's in their planning area. We got projects with Queen Creek that we work on. So it's really a kind of a revolutionary ability and tool that we've never had before that you had to get past, not only through the state, but without any kind of opposition from the utilities, that I know you helped shepherd through that. They see us as a partner in this versus a threat. So I think it's a big deal and it'll have significant impact for us going down the road.
Thank you, Leo. I think I thought we had already talked about that, but that's okay. If I may, just opine for a second about that water, that water legislation. As I said, all the water solutions, and I don't want to get too far off the agenda item there, Mr. Keller, but water legislation will be a multi-pronged approach going forward. And I think Glenn kind of mentioned that as well. So it's just one of those little tools that we'll be able to use in the future.
If nothing else, we'll move on to the 20 and 30-year certificates. Mr. Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have three employees that we're privileged to honor today, and they're all here, and they all want to speak, I believe. So that's fantastic. And tagging on to being National Administrative Assistance Day, our first employee has been here for 20 years, Mary Beth McCormick, who is now working in the Superior Court, but has worked throughout the county and has served previously, our former county manager, Greg Stanley, in an administrative role. So thank you, Mary Beth.
I just wanted to thank the board for the opportunities that they've given me for the last 20 years. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And so, next we have Denny Bird, who has been here for 30 years, worked in finance, I know, for many years, and then now supports them on the ERP team as a specialist. So helped keep our books running and keep our books clean. Thanks, Denny.
I just want to say what an honor it's been to serve for the last 30 years. Actually, 31. I had a year part-time. But who's counting? I guess I am. Anyway, it's been a privilege to work with everyone who's come before me, who I work with now, and hopefully people with work in the future. But thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Alan Harrison, who's been with us in IT for 30 years and has probably been involved in the IT setup for this building and almost every building here on our campus.
Morning, Chairman Sertie, members of the board. Just a quick thing. We rescheduled from the last time we were going to do this because Alan was actually on his sabbatical. I just wanted to say congratulations on reaching the impressive milestone of 30 years with the county. We definitely want to express our sincere appreciation for his hard work, dedication, modernizing the county's communication systems. You think 30 years in IT, what were we doing 30 years ago? Your cell phones were this big, right? So anyway. But transitioning from analog nortel to Cisco voiceover IP was a huge accomplishment. Additionally, working with Facilities Department, you think every one of these new buildings Al has probably been into, as you mentioned, going through, checking the cable plant, making sure it's retrofitted properly. And all the infrastructure and all these new buildings, it ensures that the users are at the front of the mind when we're building these buildings, making sure that the new buildings are actually usable when we go into them for IT infrastructure and those kind of needs. So that support has been invaluable, and we really appreciate it.
One more round of pictures.
Yep. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the notification for Denny's, so I apologize for that, but I'll make sure we make it up to her.
So one more round of pictures, I think.
Three, two, and again, three, two, one. Nice. She had to sneak in. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items to note. One, we have sent out, I guess, over 12,000 postcards to households over in Supervisor McClure's district, and we've been making movement. This is a step in the process to survey the residents for FCC satellite. As has been brought to your attention many times, people in that community want access to different metro areas, and so this is one of the technical steps to get that problem solved, so they'll be able to have access to the metro area news and local news that they want. 3,000 of those responses have come back in just the first seven days, so very healthy response. We're also in the middle of open enrollment for benefits for county members. It closes on May 12th. Just a reminder, you're probably already getting a lot of those. I think we have about 25% of the county has already enrolled, so keep mindful of that. And I think April 9th through the 15th, a couple of weeks ago, was Animal Care and Control Week. And in combination with that, we always like to highlight when our employees exemplify the values that we share. And we have a great story of employees that are here today that were involved that really shows the love that they have for their job, for the animals, and for the customers. And we have a video here to show a recent story that occurred.
It was a normal day, and I was doing my normal check-ins for dogs that were on foster when we got a phone call. "Thank you for calling Pinal County Animal Care and Control from a citizen in Nevada that was interested in one of our dogs here."
Oh, he's beautiful. He's a gorgeous dog.
He reminded him of one of his other dogs, which he has experienced working with feral dogs.
And then the name obviously struck me, because I'm like, "Hey, Phil, Phil, okay."
He's super, super cute.
And I'm looking at it, it's like 650 miles, and it's been a long time since I've been to Phoenix, so I was like, "Okay." So like, I'm gonna come down. I'm gonna come down and get him.
This is probably my first time that somebody's had to come out of state just to see a dog.
Well, I drove out Tuesday morning, the 13 hours.
He came to speak to me in the front office.
What a good boy. I was walking a dog, and then I got a call over the radio that somebody wanted to meet our feral dog, Phil. And they asked for me specifically, since Phil didn't allow any of their handlers.
They told me they really can't get him on the leash, and that was evident right away.
We took him out to the playgroup yard, where I did an introduction with his dogs.
I brought my other two dogs down. I brought Vader and Shere down with me to meet with Phil, because, you know, we have to make sure that there's some cohesion there.
We want to make sure that it's the best fit for the family and nothing happens once he gets home, especially since he came out of state.
He got along really well with my two dogs right away, so there was no issues there, and I'm like, "Okay."
He did the adoption paperwork.
They gave me a big crate, a big kennel, to put in the back of my truck. Had him in the kennel because I don't know how well I can trust him just being in the back of the truck.
Then they took off towards Vegas.
I drive literally out of the parking lot, just past it, there's a little transformer station there, where I noticed that the kennel had got knocked over. So I stopped there, and I got him ridged, and I drove off. I'm driving down this road, and there's this driver behind me who's just, is very suspicious, terrible driver, and he keeps following me, and he's like trying to come up on me, and he's trying to pass me an area, and then he pulls up and he goes, "Your dog, she jumped out of your truck back there." Immediately turn around, go back to where it was at. I go around trying to look for her, I'm trying to find out exactly where she got out. Search for about an hour, then I went back to the shelter.
He came back in, and he was very worried. He explained to us that one of his personal dogs jumped out of his truck, and everybody here immediately jumped up and went outside to help him look for him.
We were looking for maybe about an hour or two. There was quite a bit of staff that wanted to come out on their own time to look for the dog with their personal vehicles. I was not surprised that people were wanting to look for the dog, just because we have such a dedicated staff. After a while, we were looking, we had to call off the search, just so that we could get back to our normal jobs.
We didn't see her anywhere in the field. We had no sight of her, and unfortunately, we did have to go back to work, and we told them that we would keep a good eye out for her.
And I'm devastated. I've had her at that point for almost seven years. I always promised that she would have a home. I did drive home. I wanted to get Phil back home.
where I noticed that the kennel had got knocked over. So, I stopped there, and I got him rided, and I drove off. I'm driving down this road, and there's this driver behind me who's just, this is very suspicious, terrible driver, and he keeps following me, and he's like trying to come up on me. He's trying to pass me an area. And then he pulls up and goes, "Your dog, she jumped out of your truck back there." Immediately turn around, go back to where it was at. I go around trying to look for her. I'm trying to find out exactly where she got out. I searched for about an hour, then I went back to the shelter.
He came back in, and he was very worried. He explained to us that one of his personal dogs jumped out of his truck, and everybody here immediately jumped up and went outside to help him look for him.
We were looking for maybe about an hour or two. There is quite a bit of staff that wanted to come out on their own time to look for the dog with their personal vehicles. I was not surprised that people were wanting to look for the dog, just because we have such a dedicated staff. After a while, we were looking. We had to call off the search, just so that we could get back to our normal jobs.
We didn't see her anywhere in the field. We had no sight of her. And unfortunately, we did have to go back to work, and we told them that we would keep a good eye out for her.
And I'm devastated. I've had her at that point for almost seven years. I always promised that she would have a home. I did drive home. I wanted to get Phil back home, because I didn't want him to have to stay in the kennel. Because I, especially with dogs, like, when you have dogs with sometimes with behavioral problems like that, being in a kennel is not the best thing for him. So, I wanted to get him home. I wanted to get Vader home. I had to, like, go to work, like, really the next day. And I'm driving home, and I'm like sobbing, going, you know, I feel like I'm being punished. I feel like I've done something wrong. And I'm like, I feel like I'm abandoning her. And it was a terrible drive home.
It was just a typical morning. I was walking through, I'd just gotten here, and I had heard over the radio that a dog was loose out on the road. I ran to the front office. Where's the dog? It was so urgent, and everyone was getting in the cars, because it's like halfway down the road where the dog is. I am hopeful. They just had eyes on her, so I was like, it has to be Cher. When I got out to this main road, she was running away from the shelter, and I was like, no! So, I cut her off with my car, and she just turned right around, and she ran against the fence line, all the way until she got to the parking lot of the shelter, and she ran into the parking lot.
We had volunteers walking dogs. The owner had said that she had some stranger dangers, so we were really worried that this gate was open, and she was going to be able to run out. So, we grabbed the gate and shut it closed as quickly as possible.
The gates were shut. We had her in the corner, and we were just approaching her slowly. We don't know where she was the night before, or what she had gone through, so we didn't want to freak her out even more, and we didn't want her to bolt on us. So, we went really slow, got on her level, and we just made her feel comfortable with us, and we were able to leave her. Called the owner, and he was ecstatic. He was so excited.
How is she? Is she injured? Is she okay? And they're like, no, she seems fine. She's just scared. The very next call I made was to one of my coworkers and asking if he could cover my shift for the next day. And by 11 o'clock that day, I was back in the car.
He was ecstatic to see that we got the dog captured. He let us know that he was on his way immediately. He drove all the way down from Nevada again. Once he showed up, he was in, almost in tears, with how joyful he was that he got the dog back. So, it was a great day for us, and it was really nice to see her go home.
He was so happy. He had thought that he lost his best friend. And that is something that no one ever wants to go through. And I was just really happy that we were able to do that for him. He came, and he took a long timer. That had been here for a really long time, and then he ended up losing his dog. So, I was just really happy that we were able to help him get his dog back.
The very first set of phone calls. They were knowledgeable about the dog right away. As soon as they brought him up, like, oh, yeah, Phil. And they have over 200 dogs. So, to be knowledgeable about every single one of your dogs says something about the dedication. I remember Justin, so I interacted with him a lot regarding Phil. And, you know, just the knowledge that that young man had, and, you know, some of the things that he was saying led me to believe that this is not just a job for him. He really cares about it. Talking with the director, she was just an amazing person. And this is just as I'm adopting Phil. This is before everything happened. But then to come back and just say, hey, my dog got out of my truck. I don't know where she's at. If you see her, and then to have them just jump up, really tells me that this is a group of people that is dedicated to what they're doing. It's not really people coming in just to get that paycheck. They seem to have, like, real care and concern for what they're doing and for all the animals and their care.
You know, my job is actually a very rewarding job whenever I get to see a dog who's really missing home, and you could tell that they want to go home as quickly as possible, because nobody wants to be at the shelter.
That's like the moments that we live for here. We don't get wins every day, but that was a huge win for us.
And with Phil, the way he was, he would end up living there for all that time as well. And it's amazing, because I have him now for a little over two months, and he's a completely different dog than what I met at the shelter. Completely different. Just giving him that chance and giving him a home has made him into the dog that he should have been. And I think that's what people need to understand, is that the dog you see at the shelter may not be the exact dog that you're going to end up getting. If you can't take him home and give him that chance right away, go back to the shelter, interact with him more. Get that dog to learn to start trusting you and to start learning who you are, and you're going to find out that you have an amazing, an amazing dog.
And you'll notice all the stars from that movie are sitting in the front row over here. That was awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Audra. Thank you, staff.
Do you stand up and take a bow?
Please do.
Thank you, Chairman Sertie, Vice Chair, members of the board. I've known many of you for a very long time, but I just want to say that this group of people up here, they're amazing, but they're not the only ones. There's many, many of us that work there and have a hard job, and we do it every day with a smile on our face, and we represent Pinnell County to the best of our ability. And I'm only as successful as my staff. And these guys right here make my success look easy, and they do such a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay. Purchasing Division report. Tiara Peterson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Pinnell County, and this is your purchasing report for April 26, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract award, IFB 234024 for Oracle Clinic renovation. We recommend Canyon Building and Design be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $2,604,159.04. This contract will be used by the Facilities Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments, RFP 182824 for firearms accessories and parts. We recommend approval of Amendment Number 5 to exercise the optional extension period from May 8, 2023 through May 7, 2024 with CAT arms, LLV, DBA scionic weapon systems, and pro force law enforcement. This contract is used by the Sheriff's Office, Adult and Juvenile Probation, and Court Security Departments. RFP 192425 for printing and mailing evaluation notices. We recommend approval of Amendment Number 4 to exercise the optional extension period beginning May 6, 2023 with the Masters Touch LLC. This contract is used by the assessor. Next, the board has requested to approve the following purchase request per Pinnell County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350, governing competition impracticable purchases in the amount of $176,500 for John Thomas, Inc., for two solar-powered portable traffic signals with trailers used by the Public Works Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following change orders per Pinnell County Procurement Code Section PC 1-502, governing change orders exceeding minimum thresholds for PO #246560 with Trace Consulting LLC in the change amount of $174,471.15 for a new total of $546,246.38 for improvements to Schnepp and Kenworthy Roads used by Public Works. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO #249229 with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of $217,866.30 for the design concept report for the widening of Addaway Road from State Route 287 Florence Coolidge Highway to Hunt Highway, used by Public Works. PO #249268 with CDW Government in the amount of $171,164.92 for Microsoft Server Renewal, used by the IT Department. PO #249279 with the Armored Group LLC in the amount of $164,777 for an armored Chevrolet Suburban LT Diesel 4x4 for SWAT, used by Fleet Services and the Sheriff's Office. PO 249291 with CDW Government in the amount of $238,462.86 for the Microsoft Desktop Renewal, used by the IT Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following cooperative purchase, Requisition 167044 with Motorola Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $435,928.87 for Astro System Motorola Maintenance, used by the IT Department. And lastly, the board is hereby notified of the following contract that was signed by the county manager on behalf of the county without prior board approval, as allowed by PC 1-105. The contract is for a licensing agreement for APS data files with APS Service Territory CCN Boundary for an ARC GIS web application for the Economic and Workforce Development Department. And the staff recommendation today is to approve the purchasing division report as presented with the updated Motorola Solutions, Inc. service agreement contract number reading USC 000764379. And that concludes your purchasing division report for April 26, 2023.
Any questions or comment?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just love the pennies, you know, 04, 39, 84. Those always crack me up. But I'd make a motion we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
That's Addaway, not that way, right?
Yeah. Oh, Addaway.
If nobody from the board wants to pull anything from the consent agenda or anyone from the public, then I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approves Item A through A, B as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda carries. So, we will convene the regular meeting and go into flood control. I guess those people don't care about flooding. Okay, is there, if no one would like to pull anything from this consent agenda, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items A through D of the Pinnell County Flood Control District.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have that. We'll leave the flood control and go into public health. And would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda or take a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items A through C of the Pinnell County Health Services District.
Second. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries as well. And we'll go back to the regular meeting. 12, 13. Discussion approval for an amendment to the budget for transfer reserve appropriation. Angie. Angie Woods?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Geraldine Roll, Elections Director. This item is regarding the addition of three election specialists to be added during this fiscal year and an IT supervisor. We have the Election Officer Certification Training coming up the 12th through the 14th of June, and this will give us the opportunity to have these staff participate. Because, as you know, the EOC training only happens in odd-numbered years. So, if we did not add, if we added, if we waited until the next fiscal year, we would not be able to get these folks certified as election officials. So, that's what this item is about. Are there any questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
If not, then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Item 13 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Number 14, discussion approval or disapproval of another resolution with Mary Ellen.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepard, Deputy County Manager. Arizona Revised Statute 145601 establishes the office of the public fiduciary and mandates that each county board of supervisors, by resolution or ordinance, establish the office of and appoint a public fiduciary to be certified by the Supreme Court. The public fiduciary stands in for those persons or estates in need of guardianship, conservatorship, or administration for whom there is no other person or entity qualified or willing to act in that capacity. This office stands by and stands up for the most vulnerable in our community when there is no one else to do so. I'm here today to respectfully ask you to appoint Fred Ernie Appel to this critical county role of public fiduciary. Ernie's been with the county for over 25 years. He has served as a medicolegal death investigator with the Medical Examiner's Office. He has functioned as an environmental investigator for emergency management, and he has spent over 20 years as a licensed fiduciary. Prior to joining the county, Ernie was a sergeant with the Coolidge Police Department and a longtime volunteer for the Coolidge Fire Department. Ernie has spent his entire adult life as a part of our community and working to keep it safe. In the words of Ernie's supervisors, county partners, and subordinates, Ernie has substantial experience as a guardian administrator. His talents, judgment, and experience combine to provide the office with a very valuable asset. This office continues to be well-served by Ernie. Ernie is a consummate professional. His years of law enforcement experience give him special insight into cases that involve vulnerable abuse, neglect, exploitation. Ernie is very knowledgeable about his statutory duties as guardian conservator. Ernie strives for the least restrictive and best possible outcome, tailored to each individual case. He is meticulous with detail and does the job to the end. Ernie lives the county's non-negotiables. He is accountable, committed, and a valuable team partner. In the past 15 months, Ernie has served as the interim director. It is time we make the role official, as we believe it's in the best interest of those we serve, our community, and our county. Mr. Appel is with us here today, should you have any questions of him. But otherwise, I would respectfully ask that you approve this resolution so we can formalize his appointment into the role of public fiduciary.
Would this be his only responsibility, or does he hold another position with the county?
This would be his only responsibility. Public fiduciary is the department director, so he oversees the staff that provide these services to our community.
Anyone else?
No, Mr. Chair, with an introduction like that, I mean, you know, how could we say no? Did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, over the years, my, in the insurance business, working with Medicare, the fiduciaries was a big part of what I worked, who I worked with, because of the people that you do serve. And so, I, you know, throughout the state, we've got the 15 counties. I've worked with 14 of those counties in the past with their fiduciaries. So, I see, I know the importance of what a fiduciary does. And so, and I've met Ernie, and I can recommend him highly. Like you said, without even that recommendation, of course, I can't top that. I'm a nobody, so I'm good. So, with that, do we have, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve Item Number 14 as presented.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Any suggestions?
Is this a picture? Chairman Sertie and...
Chairman Sertie and Vice Chairman and Board Members, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to serve this vulnerable population. It, it means a lot to myself and our staff. We will be diligent at it and accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Any discussion on future agenda items? I am reminded that we were having a monthly elections update and we haven't had one for a while. Maybe we should have an update in the future with everything that's going on and how we're progressing towards the next election cycle. If nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting.